Well, good afternoon. I want to call to order the February 9th, 2022, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Certainly welcome all who've joined with us this afternoon and I know some were with us yesterday as well. So this is our second meeting of this week, and we'll have more of these as we go forward in the months to come. So with that, I want to just acknowledge my colleagues and certainly all of our clerk staff and those that assist us with the technical aspects of doing a meeting in this virtual format. We're hopeful to be able to return to chambers in the near future. But for today's purposes, this will be virtual meeting and we'll have the assist of Flo Evans and her staff and accommodating folks' presentations and calls. So with that, I turn to you, Madam Clerk, ask you to call a roll, establish a quorum, please.
Here.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, February 13th at 8:00 PM on Channel 14.
Thank you, Flo. So I would ask you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise and I think the flag will be displayed. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. I don't know if we got the flag up, but we have the chambers there, so it's a very small image of the flag. But anyway, thank you all for joining us in the pledge. And with that, then, if there's any further comments, well, in fact, you may want to read the announcement in as it relates to public participation and how we'll assist folks in accommodating their calls and presentations. So Flo, I'll turn to you, allow you to do that, please.
Okay. So the Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. This meeting is broadcast live and closed to in-person attendance. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended Public Health and Safety Guidelines. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may also send in written public comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board members and filed into the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Very good. Thanks again, Flo. And for today's purposes, we have all timed items, so we'll take those in the order which they're on the printed agenda. But just repeat one more time for those that may be tuned in that in the event that you want to make a public comment or weigh in on any item that's either on the agenda or not on the agenda, the number to call again is 916 area code 875-2500. And with that, Madam Clerk, I would turn to you. Do we have any off-agenda speakers?
At this time, we do not have any off-agenda callers.
Okay, we'll keep that open.
Or any callers in queue right now for the items on the agenda as of right now.
Okay, very good. And we'll keep the off-agenda queue open for the foreseeable portion of time here during the meeting. So with that, let's get right into our agenda then, and we'll take item number one. Please call that into the record.
Yes, this is the resolution approving the infrastructure financing plan for Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, including the division of taxes set forth therein and certain other actions relating thereto.
Okay, and who's our staff presenter on this? Is it Bob Davidson or?
It's actually me, Supervisor. Good afternoon, Supervisor.
Oh, Mr. Davis.
County dead officer, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. On April 20th, 2021, the Board of Supervisors approved a resolution of intention to form the Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District and created the Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District Public Financing Authority. The Public Financing Authority has met, directed staff to prepare the infrastructure financing plan, and held the first of three public hearings to allow public comment on the infrastructure financing. The IFP contains the following sections: An introduction, description of Metro Air Park, a description of the public facilities eligible for funding by the EIFD, which includes all the infrastructure previously included in the latest update, to the special planning area financing plan, and a financing section. The fiscal impact of approving this IFP will impact future revenues to the county of up to 50% of future property tax revenue and in lieu vehicle fee revenue derived from within the boundaries of Metro Air Park, which will be used to finance activities of the Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District in accordance with this plan. The district will be limited to June 30th, 2050, or the date at which the cumulative property tax and VLF revenue directed to the EIFD is $200 million. In accordance with the EIFD law, the Board of Supervisors is requested to approve the Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District Infrastructure Financing Plan and to allow the chief fiscal officer or her designee to approve changes, if any, to the IFP after the date of this resolution. At that time, this concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions. We also have Brandon Diaz from OREC available and Debbie Kern from Kaiser Marston.
Hey, thanks Colin. Real quickly, I know we have supervisors hands up. Did you say in 2050 or 2050?
2058, my apologies.
Yeah, 2058, because that's what the resolution said. Okay, thanks. Okay, all right. Thanks for the other folks being with us and those be available for questions. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just gonna say, there are no questions by my colleagues and nothing further from staff and no public commenters, I would move the item.
You have a motion. You have a second to the motion. I'll go for public comment.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Let me ask if there's any other, if there's any questions by members of the board, and if not, then go to any callers or commenters on the line.
And we do not have any public comments.
Okay, we did receive a couple written, or at least one written, he's a correspondence, I believe, so in support of. All right, then with that, and no questions of our staff, Mr. Diaz or Ms. Kern, thank you for being with us. We have a motion, and I would ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, again, before he perhaps leaves us, thank Colin and thank all of our staff. Amanda, I'm not sure if Amanda's on here, but they've been routine fixtures at our meetings and appreciate all their hard work on this.
Great. I would echo that, and thanks to our outside consultants as well and anybody else that's worked on this. So anyway, thank you Colin, Amanda, and I know Brandon and Debbie are here with us as well. So, okay, that's the item, and nothing further. We'll go to the next two o'clock item.
All right, item two is the update on project room key sheltering efforts. Approve an appropriation adjustment request in the amount of $7,451,434 to continue COVID-19 response efforts.
Okay, I don't know if Anne had any introductory comments, but I believe Ethan and others are going to make this presentation. I see Julie's on as well. Julie, good afternoon. Bruce, so I don't know who's, I guess Ethan, I see his name on the bottom of the floor.
It will be Ethan.
I have a sir. Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the board. Ethan Dye, Director for the Department of Human Assistance. I'll be presenting this afternoon along with Julie Field. So if we can go ahead and get the presentation started on slide two, please.
If you click the bottom button, there you go. I'm going to ask if staff can, if you can give us just a few seconds. Can someone please help whoever's doing the presentations to put it on the full screen? Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good to go.
All right. Okay, at the outset of the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020, California policymakers created Project Room Key to provide emergency non-congregate shelter to vulnerable persons experiencing homelessness. Through support and flexibility of this board, DHA has expanded sheltering efforts through Project Room Key leasing from four motel sites across the county of 541 rooms, of which we currently have 351 remaining open. These motels were used to offer quarantine and isolation units for those that most risk to adverse outcomes from the virus due to advanced age or pre-existing health conditions, as advised by the CDC. As of January 14, 2022, we have housed in prevention units 1,735 individuals, and we have housed 773 individuals in isolation. Next slide, please. Project Room Key is operated through a contract with Goodwill Industries. Shelter staff are onsite 24 hours a day and are available to support all Project Room Key participants. In addition, we have 24-hour security that is also provided with Allied Security Services. Each Project Room Key participant receives a private room, three meals a day, health services, which include daily check-ins, vaccinations, and COVID testing Monday through Friday, and provided by Public Health. They are also provided resource connections to public benefits, rehousing, and other programs that are provided. Next slide, please. Currently, we have three motel rooms in operation. There are 391 rooms, if I correct myself from earlier, for approximately $1.6 million monthly or $4,089 per month per room. The leases include $85 a night for the room, $40 per night for meals and services, and almost $6 a night for security services, ranging from, so the total room costs range from $130 to $146 per night. The Department of Health Services provides medical services and staff for approximately $204,500 per month, and they support medical staff, PPE, and Alpha One Medical Transport. Next slide, please.
Through the chair, Mr.?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Ray, go ahead, Phil.
Sorry to interrupt, Ethan, but the per-room cost that you cited or the range, I think you said 131 to 146?
130 to 146, yes.
Okay, so is that, is that the total, the total cost, including the cost for service delivery? Or is that just the shelter cost?
That's shelter, service delivery, meals, and security is all lumped into that one cost.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Welcome. Housing. The average length of stay for individuals that are currently in the sheltering program is 230 days or about 7.5 months. Of those that are in shelter as of January 14th, 2022, 88% have been there for more than one month, 63% have been there for more than three months, 27% have been there for more than six months, and 21% have been there over a year. Currently, Project Room Key is focusing on successful and stable exits. Project Room Key participants were connected to a community-based or county rehousing provider. Case management and funding to support rental deposits and subsidies have been provided through most, and have been provided through most organizations. Project Room Key partners include the county, city staff, Public Health, SSF, and consultants from Homebase and representatives from SHRA, and they meet regularly to discuss rehousing opportunities and strategies for success. Comprehensive case conferencing with providers supported by the county, the City of Sacramento, and SSF, they meet weekly and are held to discuss individual participants and strategize to address barriers to housing as well as supports and resources available. The COC Advisory Board prioritized COVID vulnerability to further support movements in the permanent supportive housing. As of January 14th, 2022, 425 individuals have exited Project Room Key shelters to stable housing. An additional 361 have exited to temporary housing or shelter destinations as emergency shelter or transitional housing programs. DHA has contracted staff and worked directly with over 200 Project Room Key participants to assist with case management and rehousing, and I see Supervisor Frost.
Yeah, good.
I just wanted to clarify on slide number four, it says capacity 391 total. Is that the number of people who are actually served or just the capacity? And do you know the number that is actually served?
That is our total capacity of the actual rooms. And when I get into, if the second part of your question can wait, we talk about our numbers about when are the ramp down?
Oh, yeah, because that's like $4,183 a month basically per person, if that's, yeah, I can wait.
Okay, thank you, and we will definitely address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. So currently, there are 333 participants in Project Room Key across all three motels. The majority of participants are working with either a rehousing provider or through DHA's flexible housing pool to find a house, to find a path into housing. To date, we have, the flexible housing pool has been able to house 121 individuals, which is a subset of the 425 I spoke to earlier. DHA will be directing newly contracted rehousing staff to Project Room Key sites in early April to assist with additional rehousing efforts. Next slides, please. So in terms of ramping down or closing, DHA is working thoughtfully to ramp down sites and continue to use available funds to support and rehouse Project Room Key households. The closure status for each site is based on available funding for the project. The federal fiscal year 2223 governor's budget does not include any additional funds for Project Room Key, as most funds have been redirected to Project Home Key efforts. In addition, FEMA reimbursements for non-congregate shelter settings are scheduled to end March 30th of this year. To ensure, to ensure safe and stable exits for participants, DHA currently plans to stagger motel closure dates and cease operations under the following timelines: La Quinta with a closure date of March 15th, 2022, Vega Bond with a closure date of April 15th, 2022, and the Comfort Inn with a closure date of May 31st, 2022. A staggered ramp down is preferred to allow time to connect all participants to the next steps in shelter or rehousing. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Julie to talk about our transition plan and our ramp down timelines.
Thanks, Ethan. Good afternoon, Julie.
Julie, you're on mute.
Good, I thought it was me again.
If she's having trouble, she may need to come in and out of the meeting.
Is it your phone? Are you on your phone, Julie? Should you unmute on your phone? She is. You might want to log off and log back in.
Just one second, Julie.
Oh, wait.
I'm getting the code for to unlock. There's a sequence of, it's a pound something that you press to unmute yourself on your cell phone. So I'm sending a IM, I'm hoping someone can IM me that code really quick. It's star six, Julie. Julie, if that, if that does not work, if you could also, can you say something now, Julie? If you go to your phone, your actual phone that you're using, and check the mute settings on the phone, not in the Zoom app on your phone, but check the mute settings on your phone, your speaker settings, whether you can put your call on speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yay, okay. Sorry about that. Again, hello, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Julie Field, Division Manager for Department of Human Assistance Homeless Services. Thank you for your patience in walking me through that. Zoom is usually so intuitive, so I appreciate that. If we could move to the next slide, please. Okay, so what we have here is more of a high-level information on our method of movement. We've used the same type of plan when we closed the SureStay in September of 2020. And then, given all the starts and stops that we've had with the pandemic, we have employed this method, you know, a few times and are confident and comfortable with it. Ethan did touch on the fact that we have a lot of work happening on the rehousing end. We have a large network of providers who are working and engaging the participants at Project Room Key, and housing offers are being made on a routine and consistent basis for the participants. And so there is a lot, a good deal of work going on in there. And in, and in the next 30 days, we expect to see a high volume of persons moving into their units. I will say that for those that have a housing option in our ramp-down plan, they are moved directly into their house along with supports from the Goodwill team. You know, we always provide that transportation and help get them situated. For those guests who are in a motel that is closing and they have housing identified, but not, it may not be available yet at the moment, we can transition them into a motel so that they can maintain that continuity of shelter until their housing unit is ready and available. And then, for those who have no housing options at the time of closure, we will continue to have them in a local motel. And from there, work on connections to, into our shelter system as well as continued, you know, connections into rehousing. We do those connections into shelter both internally through Project Room Key. As new rooms are open from people moving out, we have persons prioritized for move into those PRK locations. And then also across our county system, we have a lot of folks that we are currently transitioning into the county scattered sites. And so we are consistently working with those folks on positive shelter placements. And then, like I said, we do have the 21 days of motel voucher. The limitation with that is really the length of stay that is allowed at each motel. We do have the ability to provide longer-term supports for individuals, but we just have to move their location. So the 21-day is really just built into our motel voucher system, but there is, there is some, you know, ways that we can work with that as long as we have the funding to support extended stays.
Julie, excuse me, just for a second, Julie, we have a hand up, Supervisor Serna, I'm sorry, quit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for you, Julie, or maybe more than one here. So I want to, I think this is one of the most important parts of what we're going to discuss today and consider is if we're going to be ramping down the county's public, Patrick Runkey participating motels and understanding what that capacity has done for months now and where folks will go. I know staff have given this a great deal of thought, and we've received a great deal of correspondence in recent days expressing concern about this very aspect of the issue. I want to understand if we're ramping down, if we're being asked to ramp down Project Room Key because of the discontinuance of funding, and there's other juridic, local jurisdictions that have participated in Project Room Key, and they're doing the same thing. What is the universe of available Project Room Key motel capacity look like for those that would otherwise be in county Room Key motels? That's the first question. And then, are we, are we looking at using the vouchers any longer than, than three weeks? I have a feeling that for many that have been using, taking, you know, taking advantage of the Project Room Key sheltering and services for months, may not, you know, be able to find open beds somewhere within that short duration. So I'd like to understand a little bit better than what's presented on the chart here, what's behind the expectation about guests without housing that's been identified?
Yes, of course. To your first question about the capacity, there is, you know, along with our partners at the city who have a lot of other motel sheltering efforts and everyone, and then this, this group of PRK sites that we're looking, there is going to be a lot of ramping down of persons who have been in emergency shelter motel stays since the pandemic. With our capacity, you know, we are, we're currently at a really low census right now. With the Omicron surge, we, we've converted a lot of our space that we had to isolation units. And with the tapering of that, we find ourselves with a lot of more available rooms. And so we internally, within PRK, have a lot of opportunities for movement and shifting of persons, prioritization of those that are more vulnerable into other PRK sites to ensure that we're using, utilizing that resource in the, with the backdrop of a ramp down. Our capacity outside of that exists. We have spaces, like I said, in our county scattered site shelter for those persons. We had recently done a geographic pull from the River District area into La Quinta, and some of those individuals will be transitioning into the North A Shelter, where a couple did, did move from, and others were in that direct area. So our shelter capacity is at a place where, you know, we can meet some of the need within, and internally within PRK and also externally. And then our motel stays are there sort of as that, to buffer that, to increase our overall capacity, much as we've done with our weather respite, sheltering an additional 120 households over the cold winter months. We have the ability to scale our motels and, you know, to also meet this need. As far as, you know, our ability to go past 21 days, it is, the 21 days is a number that keeps us in line with motel policy. You know, motels don't want persons to stay as a guest on their site longer than 21 days due to residency issues. It also, it's just, it's a, it's a general, you know, philosophy that they have is that people, about 21 days is that magic number for them. So we have the ability to fund outside of 21 days as long as the money is there. It's just where they're physically located has to change after that 21 day. So there is flexibility with that.
Okay, so thank you for that. So to that last point though, could you hypothetically have a unsheltered, an otherwise unsheltered guest staying in a voucher participating motel? They approached the 21st day, their only option is to find another participating voucher motel? And could that, could the clock start anew at a different motel site with using the same voucher system? I guess is my question.
Oh yes, yes. We, the county staff, the DHA County Team, we do that all the time. I mean, we just had to do that with our weather respite that went beyond. We were able to get some of our partner motels to go to about 26 days because it fell on a weekend and so we wheeled and dealt with them. And then we, we did all of the, the coordination so that the, the persons who are being sheltered in the motels just went to their new site and that 21 days of them being there started again. It's really just that person checked in. I mean, we've had in the past for some of our long-term participants that we had to support, we've actually moved them out for a day and then moved them back because that was their hotel of preference because it was near their hospital or their mom, you know, where they were receiving cancer treatments. We are, we have that flexibility. It's just that we have to move out for at least one day. But some people just, it's easier just to move for the next 21 days if we do go that direction with that individual.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks Julie. Supervisor Desmond had a question?
Thank you Chair, and thank you so much Julie and Ethan and your work on this. Appreciate that question Supervisor Serna, because I was thinking the same thing. I mean, could you use those 21 day vouchers consecutively? And what would be the, the issue with that? So thanks for answering that question. I mean, we're all primarily concerned with ensuring that everyone who is currently housed in a Project Room Key Hotel remains housed, obviously right, that they don't end up back on the streets. And I know you have, have identified great partners and, and great mechanisms to ensure that. The question I have for you Julie is, you know, a lot of these folks who've been in Project Room Key Hotel, they have shown a high level of success in this environment. Is there any, can you explain kind of the inner relationship with their eligibility for possibly a Project Home Key location? Can they be prioritized for one of those locations as they come available?
So, you know, in, in my mind, as working with Project Room Key, Home Key is the natural next step. And I think, you know, while not spelled out in the legislation, I think it was, you know, it, it was to intend, the intention was to be that companion piece to Project Room Key. You have people who have stabilized, they've connected to medical homes. They are in a place where they are situated and they are, you know, it's, it's, it's something that they've chosen. They've chosen to remain sheltered. And so it's a perfect time to transition individuals into a program such as Home Key. We did have one program at La Mancha, Home Key come up earlier, earlier in the Home Key phase. And we, while we had about three participants move into La Mancha, which was less than we had hoped for, I, I do believe moving forward that it, it could be a possibility. I know that our COC went through a good deal of effort to prioritize persons for permanent supportive housing based on COVID vulnerabilities. That has been a large scale effort that really does, given that the population who resides in Project Room Key is, meets those, those criteria. You know, they, we can check all the boxes on them. So it is a natural, like, we have the people, we have the, they meet the criteria. And so, and, and we under recognize their vulnerability levels. So I think it would be a great transition. And the anticipation is that those, those, that Home Key entrance is through coordinated entry. So I think there are some possibilities there.
Okay, great, thank you. And then finally, you know, you mentioned coordinated entry and I know you're, you know, there's a lot of attention on the issue of coordinated entry lately and sometimes a lack of coordination. Can you talk a little bit, and I know you touched on it in the, in the presentation, but can you talk a little bit more about that coordination? And how you're ensuring that sometimes the silos are not preventing us from, from getting folks housed or keeping them housed?
Sure. Well, I could speak to the coordinated, coordinated entry, coordinated is through our partners at SSSF. SSSF since day one has been, they own this project as much as the county and the city do. They are so invested. They run our referral desk. They are there through the rehousing. You know, they, they have absolutely been instrumental in everything that has been successful as far as Project Room Key goes. As far as the, the movement, I know, you know, really coordinated entry is, is not, I don't see that as being the barrier. If the Home Key sites have certain restrictions or, you know, prescribed populations that they want to serve, like I will say, if we have a Home Key that is designated towards families with, you know, families with children who are minors, then we are not going to have a good fit with our Project Room Key as we serve single adults over 18. So right there is, you know, is one area where we wouldn't be able, be a good transition. So as far as, you know, everything is so new with Home Key. And, you know, I would hope that our work, our continued work with SHRA and SSSF would lend itself to, and then also the groundwork that the COC has done in creating this COVID specific, you know, indicator that, or preference prioritization, that it would be a smooth transition. It's hard to really foresee what's coming up as these projects are in development.
Thanks Julie, I appreciate that. And I, I think it's important that the public heard you say that coordination is not going to be a barrier to, to getting folks reh, transitioned out to other housing because I think that's, that's a concern. And I think that's something that, that I know our, our board will be talking more about in the, in the future. But one, one last thing is I do know that there are a lot of community nonprofit organizations that also have some shelter capacity, maybe have some scattered site homes that they, that they run. Can you talk a little bit about maybe some of your discussions or identifying some of those organizations to make sure that you're leaving no stone unturned?
Yeah, so currently we have worked with our, you know, within our county parameters, you know, all of our county funded shelters, we have a close partnership obviously with them and are working on that. As far as expanding that net, shelter space is at a premium. You know, we work closely at, on our DHA outreach, on our outreach side of the house. You know, we have close connections in trying to facilitate movement into like the Meadow View Shelter for women and other areas, but it is, and other shelters, but they're, you know.
And Julie, let me, let me just interrupt. I'm sorry, I was thinking more along the lines of, yeah, not just shelter because obviously we don't want someone to go from a, from a motel back into a shelter. I'm talking more of a transitional housing and even permanent supportive housing that I know are run by some of these other nonprofits. So I just want to make sure that you're casting a net wide enough where you're identifying some of those other opportunities where it's not run by a municipality. Okay, great.
Yeah, and I, I have to say, I have never seen a wider net than the efforts that have been going through. I mean, we are dredging the ocean with our nets. And we, it is, it is all hands on deck and we have had such a wonderful community response. You know, we went, we entered into the rehousing phase with no resources of our own and have had to rely on the kindness of our community partners and all of those small providers and those mid, mid-level providers. And everyone has stepped up to try to bring about the, the appropriate placement. So, and I'm, you know, hopeful that maybe this will be a great platform, this meeting right here, to, to reach those that may not be in our mix. But we certainly are attempting to leave no, no stone unturned.
Great, thank you Julie. And yes, you're right. I hope if they're, if someone's listening and they actually have, you know, some, an opportunity, they would, they would, you know, make contact with. So thank you very much. I appreciate your response to my, my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Phil, you have a hand back up again?
No, I don't. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem. Okay. I don't see other hands at this juncture, so thanks Julie for responding. Continue with your presentation. Go ahead.
Sure. Okay, how about we move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So this is, so this is sort of our formalized ramp down timeline. The Project Room Key universe is very small and communication is fluid and constant. So while, although we have these markers and time, it's, you know, we, there is the hustle day in, day out on, to meet the needs on all of these things. So, you know, the 45 days prior to motel closure, while that may denote a formalized timeline, you know, it is, it is on everyone's radar well before that. You know, we have been talking about ramp down, wow, for a very long time, just in general, you know? And it's, it's, it's proven itself with these variants never to be the, the right time or because we were heading into the winter months. But we've, we've, it has been widely shared that this is the direction that we're looking at based on our current and available funding. And also all of the rehousing opportunities that have presented themselves and the movement of persons into housing. We, one thing that we did for the SureStay is we really just focused on that motel and closing that motel and, and exiting persons into safe and stable locations. For these efforts, we are looking at our system, our PRK system as a whole and supporting people's exits so that, across the whole system, so that we can be plugging in new people all the time. One of the things that we do and is we always have, like, right now for La Quinta, we have a list of all of our most vulnerable person. And we are, we are already moving those highly vulnerable persons who may not have a housing outcome into another Project Room Key location where they, where they can, we don't have to, we know that they are, they're safe, secure. They have a little bit more time to figure things through. And, because we, we were a little bit worried about them. And so we've done that shelter shuffle, we're placing people into the open capacity at the other sites. And so while our 30 day marker says that PRK partners will evaluate existing shelter capacity both internally and externally, that's happening, you know, that's been happening for a few weeks now. But that is our formal part of the timeline. We also, as we move forward closer to the, you know, the deadline after we've moved folks into other shelters, like I said, we're currently moving folks, I think we've got a couple this week moving into county scattered site shelters. We've also got people moving into other PRK sites. We are working very closely with our housing partners on getting, you know, making these final moves into housing. I think everyone is very motivated to get folks into the, the best of all scenarios, which is housing. So then as we work our way down the timeline up until the, the, the last 10 or so days, it's really about transporting people, making sure that they, I know that our, our public health staff, our nurses on site, they are incredible in their regard for each person, making sure that they have all of the medicine that they need, making sure that they're connected, that they're, you know, that they know, you know, make sure that, because maybe they might be receiving some management to assist with their medicine, that they're on board to take care of that over, looking at the mental health needs of our participants. So those things are happening in the last 10 to 15 days. And, and then in the final 10 days, we're also slating people for transportation. We have a van, not only are Goodwill staff amazing at, with their assisting with transportation as they can, while also relying on Uber and other, other means of transportation for those who don't have their own vehicles, which many do. We also have our DHA outreach team who has a county van and we have slotted schedules. And so we will be doing runs to housing, to other PRK sites as well as to the motels that are closest to, that they're on a 21 day voucher. We want to get them to the, the motel that is closest to their, you know, geographical preference. You know, where did, where were they referred into from, into PRK? We want to be sure that we are able to get them into their, their main hub of existence, where their people are. And, and so our, our crews will be transporting them to those motel sites as well. And, you know, slowly as we move out of the motel, we will be, the shelter staff will be pulling out all of the administrative, you know, props that we have in there. We've brought in large refrigerators to store all the meals. We've got the whole office set, so slowly dwindling those materials and preparing for that final day of handing over the motel back to its ownership. So that's it, that's it in a nutshell. And like I said, that is our, these are our formalized steps, but we're, we just, we do things as, as they come. And we try to be as communicative as possible and ensure that there are no surprises for folks. And then, and so those, those are the ends of my slides. But I did want to pass it along to Ethan who I know had some, some final comments. And then I'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you Julie. Thanks for your ongoing work and efforts and certainly for taking time to walk down through the efforts that have been ongoing as well as what's slated for, for the weeks and months ahead. So, okay, let's, we'll go back to Ethan, die, conclude the presentation. Then we'll go to, for more questions and then we, I believe have private members of the public on the phone as well. So Ethan, go ahead.
Great, thank you. And one thing I want to make sure that the board and the public understand is as we're going through the ramp down, if we identify that something, something has not worked the way it should have. So let's say the first rent, let's say like the La Quinta closes really perfectly, everybody gets housed and we start to do the ramp down at Vega Bond and all of a sudden there's no rooms available. We're not able to move folks around. DHA will be exploring the use of ARPA funding, working with the motels and jurisdictions to keep those motels open until maybe the fall, where we anticipate having additional resources available such as the landlord engagement, ARPA request that this board approved a couple of weeks ago, as well as the hiring and the staffing of all of our rehousing navigators that were approved in our growth request last year. So I just want to make very clear that we are not looking to put mass folks back out on the streets and, and just, just to close a motel. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that there are, that we are going to be trying to make sure that we're doing it right, methodically, and that we're doing it with thought. And that concludes my presentation. Here for any questions?
Okay, I mean, look to board members, I did have one question Ethan. It goes to the timeframe for closure of the motels or, or exiting those properties. Kind of a two-part question. One, do we have, in some cases, nearly the entirety of the motel or that property has been occupied by our Project Room Key clients? Then what is the arrangement? You mentioned kind of the cost per night and so forth, but as we exit for any room renovation and/or other kind of wear and tear? How is that, how has that worked out?
I will answer a part of it. I will probably, Julie will probably flag me for another piece of it. So that's a really good question. When we started Project Room Key in all of the lease agreements, there were stipulations that the county would pay for damages that had been incurred. Since we have been fully leasing all of these, all of the motels for over two years, the, or almost two years, the landlords or the owners of the properties have waived that. So we would actually be turning back over the quote unquote. So, we would actually be turning back over the quote-unquote keys and that property owner would be able to convert it, change it, clean it, and do whatever they needed to. The county is not, would not have any obligation to fund that based on the leases.
Okay, thanks. I see Julie shaking her head saying that's it. So, let me ask though, we have arrangements with a number of hotels, motels, where they accept vouchers, but we don't lease the whole facility and we're part of the mix of their customers who, you know, may pay on, you know, for a night or whatever their stay is versus where we put folks there, as Julie said, for twenty-one days or sometimes longer, depending upon the nature of the housing challenges for that particular person. Are we going to maintain any arrangements with, once we exit, turn the keys back to have a handful of vouchers at these locations? Or are we not going to have any opportunities to house folks at these locations?
So, for, I'll talk about La Quinta last, because I think that one's a little more nuanced. The other two, we would definitely want to work with that motel and be able to do that, because the folks who have been in there know where they are. So, we would be engaging with the property owners and the entities who own the motels to do that. And I say La Quinta is a little different because they were recent, they were sold in November and to a new, to a new group, and we have not engaged with that new organization yet. And we've actually been in, doing what we've been doing with Project Room Key on the good graces of the owners who haven't turned over their keys yet. So, I think La Quinta might have a little bit of work in the new owners not knowing us or depending on what they want to do with the property. But the other two, we would definitely try to come into an arrangement where we could have some available space.
I guess that raises a question in my mind, though, because part of this package has been, you know, we've leased the entirety of the facility, but we've provided some, you know, meals. There's been other supervision of the property and so forth, and that, you know, we've occupied, you know, at least, you know, signed up for all rooms, whether we've occupied them totally or not. So, in the evaluation for, you know, what is, you know, what's the next step for the people we're serving? Will you look at that as well? Because again, you know, it's been a more structured situation. You know, if they're voucher, they're not, that's not a structure. Folks stay for a night or two or three or whatever we voucher them for, certainly they're free to come and go, but we don't provide meals and some of those other support services, as I recall anyway. So, I'm just curious about if we continue some sort of arrangement, how do we factor that into the equation?
So, I think that the arrangement we would do is much like we do, I know Julie's given this a lot of thought, is probably much like we do right now, where the motel has the ability to say, yes, we want to be part of the motel vouchering system. We give them access to our automated voucher system, which is what the room reservation and how payment is done. And then, when we have somebody that we want to place, we reach out to them, say, are you, do you have a space open? The person has ID, they're not on the do not rent list. So, I think it would be more of that arrangement, not necessarily an arrangement where we would reserve and pay for rooms that weren't being occupied.
And I will say, as far as the, you know, overall services, while we wouldn't be providing meals and meeting those daily, you know, needs for that, we, one thing that we have done that I think is worth noting is that instead of building a housing program internally through Project Room Key, we put folks in the hands of our community. We link them to the community services and resources that are going to support them in the long run, as opposed to making them dependent upon us for that ongoing support. So, that when Project Room Key went away, because it was supposed to, we thought, we were thinking three months tops, that, you know, they would have these ongoing supports. And so, you know, with that, even though they may not have that connection to a staff, a shelter staff person at another motel site, they will have their rehousing connections, their navigators, other folks that they've created these long-term relationships with to support them once they've stepped out of the Project Room Key sheltering model.
One follow-on question then is that, under the schedule, the Comfort Inn is the last of the three that would be exited. And I, you know, I heard, you know, several times in presentations about flexibility and you may adjust to assure that folks aren't, you know, basically put out in the streets when we, you know, exit a property. Is it your sense, though, that we will hit the May thirty-first date? Again, that's been an arrangement. We've certainly reached out to the city and thank you Julie, Ethan, and others for keeping the City Ranch Cordova prize. That one, you know, is on the far eastern edge of the city, but nonetheless, certainly District Five, but, well, actually it moves now to District, so now in District Three. So, it's in Supervisor Desmond's district, but was at the time, obviously, when it was occupied and up until December. You'll, I guess, I assume you'll keep Supervisors a prize, but I mean, that one, in that case, obviously, the city has, you know, certainly been accommodating in respect that they see, they've seen the need and they, you know, appreciate it, I think, as I've heard back, you know, security onsite and, you know, just overall management. And if there's been any interface that needed to be attended to with adjacent businesses and/or the tenants, you know, our clients, you know, we've been, have worked on that over time, in a way I think it's been, you know, been positive in its response. So, I guess you have confidence in the schedule that with everything that's been laid out that we would, you know, so there's not, you closed, you closed it too and then we're kind of stuck, you know, because you've got, you know, still a hundred or a hundred and twenty folks that are, you know, in various stages of trying to transition and you're not able to, to, you know, meet the needs. I guess I'm just curious, contingency, as I heard it, yeah, you have some flexibility, but is it contingency that you move through it and you kind of step down and then you get to a plateau where it may be difficult to move off of to, you know, because of the various needs that people were serving? I guess my question is, is there any, not much chance you're going to prolong this, I guess? If I could ask it to be indelicately, but that is the date for closure per schedule?
I'll get this one to you Julie. You're more boots on the ground.
Sure. You know, first off, I just want to say that Project Room Key has really greatly strengthened our connection to the city of Rancho Cordova. They have been incredible partners and I feel like we have really reached a great common understanding and partnership around, you know, resolving homelessness in our community. They've been great partners. As far as, you know, and as your question, Don, like, is there flexibility with the timeline?
Well, my question more is that, if you get in, you kind of get into a box, Julie, where you've closed the other two, you've ceased, you know, you've exited, and, you know, you've stepped down, but maybe you still have dozens of folks who don't have a real viable plan, and even if you were looking at vouchering them elsewhere and so forth, I mean, there's, you know, other factors as you've outlined. And so, we get ourselves in a position where you've, you've basically exited two with a focus on helping the clients and meeting their needs. And then you get, as I said, to get to a plateau, my word, where, you know, there's now dozens of folks that are still being housed under the Project Room Key or at least under the auspices of being placed, you know, you know, inside of those locations, that location. Do we get in a situation where this is potentially prolonged for?
To answer your question, I think more directly is, we are, we are comfortable with the dates that we have put out for the transition plan.
Okay.
With an understanding that if what you're saying happens where, you know, we've rammed down two and we're not able to find those supports, definitely be, we will reach out to the city of Rancho Cordova. They've been great partners, but that was why I wanted to make sure that I had put in that, you know, we will ask for, to look at ARPA funding to extend for a while, because we're putting with the landlord engagement work that Emily is doing and along with some of the other supports that we have been bringing to the board over the last year. I don't see that extending past the fall, at worst, past the fall. So, I, we are comfortable with the dates, and however, if something were to slide, we do have a contingency for it.
Okay, no, that's, yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Oh, I just wanted to say, you know, we, one thing that we've learned over the course of this pandemic is the unpredictability of things as far as housing options, as far as surges and variants and all these different things. And so, we are really approaching this with a flexible lens as we've, we've had to this entire time. And really bringing in, in these last couple of months, with the addition of our new rehousing team of navigators that we were provided through a growth request in June and some flexible housing funds, we are going to really cut our teeth on some of those practices with the PRK folks and hope to make some real, some really, get some really great work going. You know, one of the things that we are looking at is, because so many folks are priced out of the market and there's been so many incredible connections made onsite at the PRK sites, we want to look at matching up roommates to create, you know, more affordability factors within the household. We want to compare, we want to pair up people who may need IHHS with people that they've met that could be those providers to boost up income all around. So, you know, this, these next few months are really going to give us an opportunity as the county with these resources to get in there and do things, because so far, we've had to rely on others. And with the county going in with this vision and with these, manned with these new resources, I am very confident that we are going to see some incredible results from that. And then having the flexibility to, you know, to extend, as we've been doing all along. I mean, we're going through this, like I said, very flexibly. And so, you know, I, you know, so I feel very confident in the path that we're taking because we, you know, this isn't hard and fast. Nothing's hard and fast with the pandemic. And as a COVID response, we are really attuned to that and we're also resourcing it appropriately.
Okay. Well, thanks Julie. Thanks Ethan. And I would just say that Supervisor Desmond, you want to keep him a prize because as of December seventh, you know, the segment East of Sunrise in the city of Rancho Cordova, transitioning to District Three, so.
I thought the La Quinta was actually on the west side, Supervisor Natali. Either way. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Supervisor Natali, if I could jump in for a moment?
Yeah, go ahead, Ann, yes, yeah.
I just want to let everybody know that the city manager from Rancho Cordova has reached out directly to me in the last few months, indicating how pleased he's been with the use of the Comfort Inn there and his interest in partnering with us on a motel voucher program to continue that. So, the city is actively engaged, as Julie said, so we're pleased about that.
Now, thanks Ann. Again, I, you know, I affirm, I've heard similar comments, probably not to the level of detail that either of you, but that's, that's why I kind of framed my question in that same regard. So, okay, well, very good. Any other comments or questions by board members? Otherwise, I trust we have some folks that have, we've gotten some correspondence in the last couple of days and we probably have some callers. So, if I don't see their hands, Flo, let's go to our callers.
We did not have any public comments this time.
Okay. Bruce, go ahead then. Actually, I think you're unmute Bruce.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to take a moment Supervisor to just thank Ethan and Julie and Emily and everybody else who's worked so hard on this project. When we, you recall, when we got into this at the beginning of the pandemic, we really weren't sure what we were getting into or for how long. And these folks, I think you can hear it in their voices, the commitment and the enthusiasm and the dedication to working with our clients to make this work. And I just want to say publicly, I really appreciate it.
Thank you Bruce. And just while you're at the floor there, real quickly, I know that, you know, as other components, certainly beyond just Room Key, we've worked in the community too, certainly under the guise of the pandemic, but also just the homeless situation in general. And it might be just very quickly, I don't know, it was touched, I didn't hear it, that, you know, some of the correspondence we've received was concerned about some of the basic health and safety items. So, maybe just, if you could just elaborate on that quickly, I know it does.
Be happy to. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you Supervisor. Absolutely. I did see that correspondence. And to follow up what I said a couple of weeks ago at your recent board meeting, we have worked collaboratively, you see some faces appearing on your screen here. We've worked collaboratively to continue those services, sanitation, water distribution, et cetera. Emily has the latest. Let me ask Emily, just real quickly, could you give the board an update and the public an update on that, please?
Sure, happy to. Thanks Emily Halken, Director of Homeless Initiatives. I saw the correspondence as well and really appreciate the advocates continuing to lift this up. And there's three specific items that I'm going to speak to, and Siobhan might have a little bit more to add about PPE. Specifically, the sanitation request. So, as you know, we've been funding sanitation stations throughout the county as part of the COVID response. And there's currently about thirty-nine, it kind of comes and goes, stations, which usually consist of a porta potty as well as a wash station. And they are placed based on input from community partners in locations where there's either large camps or camps that don't have access to other facilities. That is continuing as of right now. And in the board budget from last year in June, when we first thought COVID was ramping down, you had the forethought to put funding in our budget to continue that. So, once the official COVID response is done, which currently we have funding for that through March, we do have funding to continue sanitation services and encampments. Also, the, it was brought up about water and garbage, and we have been delivering through a partnership with Sane Water Pallets into encampments since early on in the pandemic. We did lessen that distribution starting in January as the numbers started to shift, but we are ramping that back up. Probably in the next week or so, you'll start seeing the delivery ramp back up to where it was in December. And we have made commitments to continue that, at least through the end of this fiscal year. And then, in the next few months, I'll be working with our partners in the city, SSF, and certainly our community advocates to come up with a continual scale and scope of this post-pandemic. What, what are the needs? What are other community partners doing? What are the cities doing? We do recognize that we want to ensure that folks in encampments have access to these critical services. So, that is, there should not be any concerns that water or sanitation are going to be removed anytime in the near future. Now, Siobhan, you want, there were some questions about PPE.
Yeah, no, I'll just add, thank you, Siobhan Katari, Department of Health Services, that basically, we've also been distributing hand sanitizers as well as masks. We did a distribution recently to some of our partners at Loaves and Fishes to be able to get those out to the encampments. We also have been doing COVID-19 vaccine clinics in which we're also distributing those supplies there as well as COVID testing. And we recently distributed almost two thousand antigen test kits also through our partners for the encampments as well. Additionally, I'll just add that we have a number of harm reduction agencies in the county that distribute Narcan. And so, we will continue to work with those agencies to ensure that they can access supplies through the state. They get them directly through the state and are able to get them out to folks in the community. So, we'll continue to engage with them and ensure that that is still happening. There was also a flyer that we put together regarding how to manage COVID-19 symptoms. When would you go, when would you need to seek medical advice, those types of things? So, we did make a flyer in English and Spanish. We did get those out through Loaves and Fishes to our partners and so they could distribute them to the encampment. So, those are some of the additional things that we're working on in public health.
Thanks Emily. Thanks Siobhan. Thanks Bruce. See a couple of hands from colleagues. So, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I am prepared to move, Steph's recommendation for the appropriation adjustment with a great amount of, thanks to Ann, Ethan, Bruce, Siobhan, Emily, Julie, and everyone else that's been working so diligently for the last several months on not just Project Room Key, but, you know, the enhanced continuum of care that we've had to stay focused on in the course of the pandemic response. It's been a great team effort. So, I'm prepared to move that. I just want to make sure, especially given one of the commenters frustration expressed yesterday that they had. that they had trouble accessing the, the remote meeting system for public comment. I just want to check one more time with, with our clerk's office to make sure we don't have anyone in the queue to address the board.
No, we don't have anyone in the queue that, and I left it open even after I said it. No one was there.
Okay, very good. And thanks to all the advocates who wrote the, the board and staff with your thoughtful concerns, comments, and suggestions. I think we all took to heart. All that was communicated to us. So move the item as for a second. I know Supervisor Kennedy wants to comment as well.
Well, I'll, I'll echo all of that and, and second the motion. The, the one question I have, if it's okay, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Emily, you addressed some of the concerns that were forwarded to us through a letter from a broad coalition. I thought it was a productive letter, to be honest with you, and, and, and it did have good ideas. Their concerns, at least the one letter, were less on whether or not they were getting these services, but whether or not we're maintaining them and whether or not, you know, we're, we're doing that in between work. And I just want to just get your take on that.
Yeah, I agree. I share that, the sentiment that it was a very well thought out. And so I do agree. And so we have, we do have the funding and the commitment to continue the services, the sanitation, the garbage and the water through the end of this fiscal year, but also a commitment to reconvene with those advocates to determine what, what we need to do ongoing. So we have the funding in place or soon will for, to keep us going for June. And then we will be coordinating with those advocates and our city partners to make a plan that will probably come before you for the next fiscal year and beyond.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thanks to Bill, Patrick. We do have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments by supervisors? Seeing none. One last check. Anybody on the phone? If not, go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, I'm checking right now. No one is on the phone. And so let me just close it before I take the roll. Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. Appreciate your ongoing good work.
Someone just got into the queue. So do you want to take their call?
Absolutely.
Can you please get the caller and transfer him in?
We tried. Tried to get it.
Got it on the fourth try, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was Alma testing the phone. There is no caller. Sorry.
We can see. Thank you, Alma. But, okay, very good. All right. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item three, item three is approve revisions to the Beachstone Lake's flood insurance and flood mitigation programs.
Good.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Michael Peterson, Director of Water Resources. The item this afternoon is to bring back some additional or some proposed revisions to Beachstone Lake elevation mitigation program. It's a program that's used to subsidize elevations in the Beachstone Lake area, home elevations in the Beachstone Lake area. We've got some additional proposals to add to the program based on public input and conversation with the board previously. So I've got George Booth on, on, he's on the queue as well as we do have Todd Peterson, Michael Johnson, if any other questions come up. And so we have George discussed the three proposals, but I do know that there is a document from a resident of Beachstone Lake area that I believe will be read into the record. And additionally, there's a memo from County Council. So after we conclude the discussion of the, the three proposed changes, then we obviously can entertain discussion of those items as well. So I will kick this over to George.
Okay, thanks, Michael. And thanks for noting the two items that came in, I think, subsequent to the board report being submitted. So, okay, great. George, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Just a real quick overview in case you might have possibly forgotten about Beachstone Lake. Beachstone Lake is.
No chance of that, George.
North, North Delta. It's west of, west of Elk Grove. Extends from Twin Cities on the, Twin Cities Road on the south to about Freeport, south of the, of the mall there by Freeport and, and extends over to the east to Franklin Boulevard. So that's the area we're talking about. And the, the ground elevation is generally 10 to 18 feet above sea level. And the flooding source is the Kasoomas River on the south and the, and Morrison Creek coming from the east. And the Morrison Creek watershed extends from Elk Grove to Rancho Cordova and includes all of the vineyard areas. Basically, all of the urban and urbanizing area of Sacramento County, Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova. And that all drains toward Beachstone Lake. South of Lambert Road, kind of the Twin Cities area, is where the Kasoomas River meets the McCollum River. And 100-plus years ago, North Delta Reclamation Districts built levees. And that's, and this has been an issue for 100 years. And no, I'm not that old, but I've been here for a long time dealing with this issue. In the, in the, in the late 1980s, we, we began, oh, wait, one more thing on flooding. And I could put, I could put a picture on the screen, maybe. Can I do that real quick? See if that works. Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. So the red outline is the, is the Beachstone Lake area. And this, this line on the west, the red line on the west is, is the Southern Pacific Railroad that was built in about 1906. It's on a raised embankment which choked the, it encroached on the, on the, what would be the Beachstone Lake flood plain. The levee on the Sacramento River, of course, also encroaches on, but it also protects. So the, the, I just want to say real quick that the biggest flood concern is, the more frequent flood concern is related to the Kasoomas River and Morrison Creek. But the biggest flood concern is the Sacramento River levee on the, on the, on the east side of the river, on our side of the Sacramento River. From just south of Freeport and that big bend in the river that we call Scribner Bend and all the way down to past the town of, of Lock, which is coincident with Hood Franklin Road. The, the levee is owned and operated by the State of California Maintenance Area 9. And it has some, some critical and urgent repair needs that the, that the state has yet to address. And so I just want to.
George, if I could, could just on that point, and I'm glad you referenced that point as we're talking about this item. But you and I have had a chance to talk about it. We've talked with community members, and I know you've talked with other representatives, certainly engineering levels. You know, I believe, and I've said this in our conversation, you and I, and to Michael as well, that, you know, one, the state has the obligation, Maintenance Area 9. And there are, there's a, a, a assessment that folks pay annually, and there's been identified weaknesses or hotspots from Freeport on down. And I think you meant to say Hood, because that's coincidental with Hood Franklin Road. I may go all the way to Lock, but nonetheless, and I think that this rises to the level, George and Michael, and I would suggest as a part of today's consideration that we ask you to bring back, and in fairly short order, I think a thoughtful, but I think a clear letter for consideration by our board and, you know, and whether it's something that we would approve through the chair or, you know, in some cases, as it relates to items of, you know, where there's, you know, some peril involved or, you know, a great impact. We've been known from time to time to actually have five supervisors through an action sign on to a letter. And this is no, no small matter. And again, I don't want dwarfing today's discussion and what we're being asked to consider today. But I think it does dwarf in some respects because that is, that's, you know, a threat in that we've got, you know, several miles of levy that is the state's responsibility. It's not within the quote urban setting, but nonetheless, it's their responsibility. And it does, you know, basically present a threat to communities and, and, and life and property along that corridor of our, you know, river communities. And so I know, again, we've done some work around this and, you know, the, the state's, you know, done their work as it relates to identifying those locations where, I think you've quoted this, where in some cases the levees have gone to a state of, of maintenance need that provides something less than a 25-year level of protection because of some of the identified and known items along this, along that stretch of the Sacramento River. So I don't know. Again, Michael and George want to weigh in on that, but I, I, I for one would suggest very, you know, strongly that we ought to, you know, get this matter before our board. We'd have a rightful discussion as it relates to, you know, the information behind it, but you touched on it today. And I thought this was an opportune time to at least ask that you bring back to us in, in, in very short order. You probably got the letter ready to go, a communication to whoever is the state. If we need to write to the governor and to the legislative delegation and/or Director of Water Resources or all of the above and some others below, I think it's time for the folks to, you know, own up to the responsibility and, and, you know, help address what is a real and present threat to flood protection along the Sacramento River levee.
I think that's, that's, you know, an excellent suggestion, and we could certainly bring something like, something like that back for the board to consider. You know, similar to what we've done for the, the Delta tunnels kind of approach and some adapted state, certainly.
Okay, that's great. And again, I know you've got another item that's complimentary to this item that I think you anticipated bringing. So that, again, I don't want to link the two because they are, again, separate.
We may want to run the letter in it, ahead of it, because it, we can, we can get that to the board fairly.
Okay, very good. Okay, good. Thanks. Okay. Anyway, I appreciate George pointing that out because you provided the entree to that point. So, okay, George, continue.
Well, just real quick to wrap up my overview, the, in the late 1980s, we began collecting a couple hundred dollars an acre from land developers in what was all unincorporated county and now is inclusive of the two, two new cities of, you know, they're not new anymore, but Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova. And that is called Fund 315X, and it has about $3.5 million in it. And in, in 1999, Laguna Stone Lake at Elliott Ranch South was developed, which is at I-5 and Elk Grove Boulevard. And they encroached slightly into the Beachstone Lake flood plain. And as a mitigation measure, they provided $2 million lump sum, which, with which we started a flood insurance program on a temporary basis in 1999. We've been buying flood insurance for approximately 125 houses since 1999 in this temporary program. In 2007, we came to the board of supervisors and, and suggested that, recommended that the, that the best mitigation measures to, to mitigate flood risk in the Beachstone Lake area is property by property, whether that be raising a house or, or building a flood wall or berm, building landscape berms, raising wells, adding foundation vents, filling basements, what have you. The goal is to reduce flood risk and to reduce the cost of flood insurance so that this area can survive and thrive into the future. And not, not that we're, not that we're claiming in any way that we caused them any real measurable damage, but there is an existing problem that has been here for over 100 years. And, and it's, and it has seemed fair to not only Water Resources, but also to, of course, the Board of Directors and the, and, and the, and the public and as well as the land developers that, that, that a small, small developer impact fee, it's roughly $320 a developable acre now. It doesn't seem to be of any great concern to the land developers. And as you can see, with three and a half million plus 1.7 million in the other account, there's, there's a, there's a pot of money with which we can, we can, if, if we, if we, if we combine it with FEMA grant money, and we've been, my office has been extremely, it's not my office anymore because I'm retired and no, but anyway, the, we've been very successful in, in attracting FEMA grant money. And that helps to, to further these mitigation projects on a property by property basis. And I, I just, I don't, I don't think we're going to have a problem long-term financially in accomplishing these, these, these projects as people desire. So in 2017, I'm wrapping up here real quick. In 2017, the Kasoomas River flooded twice in January and again in February of 2017, it came over Lambert Road from south to north. It combined with Morrison Creek water and a dozen or so houses got wet. A lot of land got wet. And, and we came back to the board to reinvigorate this, this program that had kind of gone dormant for 10 years. We, we reached out to all the property owners in 2007. We, we got no response. And so then when we got another flood, people became more interested. I actually think if this item is approved today, that, that there's eight or 10 households, homeowners who are, who are ready to raise their houses. So, and that, and that might be a catalyst for more attention once they see that it's, it's a, it's a doable thing. Raising a house is a messy proposition. If you can imagine, you know, remodeling a house, this is entirely messier than that. But I'll just say that every, and we've done over 100 of them in this office throughout the years. Without exception, people are happy when it's, when it's, when it's done and they don't have to worry about flooding. The cost of flood insurance goes down, that the value of their house should go up because of the reduced flood risk. And, and, and plus you, in, in many cases, you wind up with a, with a whole area under the house that can be used for, as a garage space or for storing incidentals or for your shop smith or whatever you need to have. So the three things we're asking for is to 100% fund the home elevation and the other mitigation measures for properties. And that would be retroactive to, so we would reimburse anybody that's already gone ahead. That's only fair. The reason that that came up is that we, we have always offered 100% funding of the eligible cost for people that are low income based on their annual income and the number of people in their household. And that was just a bright line and it, and people thought, well, that's not really fair. I mean, why not? Why wouldn't that same deal be available for, for everyone in Beachstone Lake? And so that's why we're bringing this point to your board. The, the other one is, again, this program was set up in 1999 and we haven't edited it since. So the second, the second recommendation is to stop paying flood insurance for people who have mitigated, are mitigated, or don't even need to, don't even have to have flood insurance. I, I never say have to versus need to is often a different thing when it comes to insurance. But if they don't have to have flood insurance, or if they've already been mitigated by this program or by other means, then, then I don't know what obligation we should have to continue paying their flood insurance. But that would sunset middle of next year, which gives us plenty of time to reach out to people. And, and, and that's my job is to reach out to people. And I have done that. And I, I think, I think the people in Beachstone Lake, they certainly know me, and I think that they find me reasonably easy to talk to. And, and, and that's important. And so that's, I'll continue to do that. The third thing is, and this has come up many times in meetings, is when you're raising your house, you have to live somewhere. So we're, we're offering a $12,000, we're recommending a $12,000 lump sum for however they decide to live, whether it's a higher regency in Maui or if they want to live in a, in a. or if they want to live in a, in RV on their property or, or anything in between. So that's my, that's my story.
Well, thank you, George. Just a, a couple of things. One, certainly appreciate your work. I know that obviously you've spent many hours both down in the Point Pleasant. It's not just Beachstone Lake. There's a community of Point Pleasant. There are folks in the town of Franklin and certainly that identify with their location. So it's, it's an area that was, you know, settled many years ago. And I think you recited the history that, you know, gives some backdrop to, you know, what's evolved over time. And I know that, you know, your work certainly has, I think, resulted in folks looking at the opportunities. And I think your efforts on the FEMA grants, applications have, you know, proven not only helpful, but obviously they, you know, they really allow you, because I know you're very committed to fulfill, you know, what you see as your obligation responsibilities to help protect, you know, people's lives and property. And, and, you know, I want to thank you for your efforts. You and I have been in several community meetings over the years. And there are differences about approaches and such, but I, again, I think there's never question about your commitment to trying to assist people to, you know, reduce the harm and risk. And so thank you for that. I wanted to note that, you know, in your report, as you were going through, that the flood insurance program, because Safecas had a role in this, the Sacramento Flood Control Agency, in contributing at the same, about the same time in 1999, early 2000, as we were then looking at some physical improvements, whether they be levies or pumps and/or retention further upstream in a combination. And I know our board took up to a whole issue about flood fighting on Lambert Road a couple of years ago too, and looked at some of these funds. But, but Safecas has been a partner. They likewise dedicated $2 million as a part of a mitigation strategy when they did their raise of the, I think some of the Beach Lake levies to the north around the regional sanitation plant that protects South Sacramento and some of the city portions of, of the area there, north of Freeport and some of those neighborhoods. So there, we've had a partner. I think part of the concern has been, I want to point this out, is that, you know, that fund, you know, was, looked to be temporary and that we thought that we were going to have some physical fixes beyond home elevations. And obviously, you know, there's been very few of those improvements. There's been some nickels and dimes, so to speak, and, you know, buying some flood, you know, protection with the lower, we're McCormick Williamson. We've done a little work up there in the, in the Beach Lake area, repairing that levy on the north, the berm that Michael Peterson first cut his teeth on way back when.
I like to talk about that.
Yeah, I know. It was a little leaky, but there would have been some work done there. We worked with the refuge and, 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 and again, and some of the, you know, the efforts along the SP cut to enlarge and improve the culverts there. And so there's been work done and, and as well down at the Lambert Road Bridge for some of the gates and the operational aspects of that. So I, I just wanted to kind of fill that in and without getting any more detail than that, I will say that we had a community meeting after the board first had this on its agenda back last summer. And there was some, you know, very serious and I think heartfelt and impassioned disagreements about what was embedded in the report at that time and some of the recommendations. And so George and Michael and Todd and Michael Johnson all went back to the, you know, to the, not so much the drawing board, but back in and I think took those things into consideration. And we had a community meeting which George and I were front and center last month. And what's being recommended today was, I believe, very well received by most folks in the audience. So we've received, you know, some feedback from folks who, again, see it as being incentives and being paid for out of some of the dollars that, you know, were designated for mitigation as a result of projects in, in the upstream Morrison Creek Basin. And so, you know, we, we come, I think with, you know, the community certainly being supportive of the, the recommendations, particularly those that relate to the, the money for folks for other accommodations. It's not just messy, it's inconvenient. And I know folks have had to think about their own family situation and being out of your house for months and, and, and folks are not going to Maui. I can assure you to stay at with $12,000. They're, you know, living in trailers and offsite, maybe onsite. And so it's, you know, it runs some hardship there. And I would just, one other thing I want to note on this is that, you know, George's work, and I know he's, you know, outside of the area where it's designated, that this, this additional compensation is available to help lighten the load. We have folks in the adjacent areas that aren't in the, you know, impacted by the Morrison Creek Basin in the Franklin Pond area, which is immediately to the east of Franklin Boulevard and south of Point Pleasant Road and that general area there, actually south of Franklin. So they were working on, we have one homeowner. And again, our board will be seeing communication from a homeowner who for the last five years, since the floods of February 2017, when that particular party appeared before our board, brought pictures in, we went to work on trying to assist with a FEMA grant. George was successful and submittal. But the frustration has gotten to the point where that person is, for reasons they've cited in the letter to my office received yesterday, have decided to withdraw because of the rigors of contracting, of getting, you know, meeting the various obligations under, under the FEMA requirements, but also just, you know, the, the current, you know, marketplace and increased costs and a variety of things. And just the fact that they've endured a lot, besides they haven't been flooded twice in 2017. And that's unfortunate because again, I think it's, it just reflects though, I think some of the, the trials that come with even something where, you know, dollars are available to homeowners to, to assist them in this regard. So with that, I was just want to say, I, you know, I attended the meeting last month and my feedback has been, we've got a letter to read into the record, but I did have a couple of questions. And so here's, I want to get to the point here. On the, on page four, George, under eligible costs and ineligible costs, we spent quite a bit of time, both last summer and then again, to some degree in the meeting a few weeks ago. And, you know, some of this relates to what FEMA has a criteria, you know, has in their criteria, but we do have this local contribution to this. And I know it's come to me as recently as last evening that, you know, some of the definitions are, and maybe by design are a little imprecise. But we've heard of kind of some of the, the differences where one party, because of the, you know, the second story addition is eligible for an elevator or extended ramp, although the practicalities of a ramp, when you got to go up 17 or 18, you know, stairs as a flight gets to be pretty, pretty onerous. But there's some questions there, you know, about materials that are used that when you add a, basically a whole first floor story to a house, you know, how you match those materials up and such. And question about, you know, what's a large deck versus a small deck, you know, upgrades, but where some folks would use siding, but to match it up, they might have lapboard or they might have stucco. And how we need to prescribe and or interpret that. And certainly you've been helpful because again, you've been working with this program for a lot of years. But, you know, as you noted, you've retired and come back and we're, we're blessed to have you. But how is this going to get sorted out? Because there's still questions, I think, in the minds of some folks down there, how those are going to be interpreted and, you know, how they would meet the requirements under the FEMA requirements, but also, you know, provide for something that's both aesthetic and certainly gets the flood protection that you get by raising the house. And so I don't know if you have any, it's kind of a, a long question, but you understand what those points are. And I know you've utilized some discretion, but, and again, I don't know if it gets bumped up to Michael. And Michael, I can see your response. So how are we going to address it? Because there's still some lack of definition, might be by design, but it also leaves it, I think, fuzzy because homeowner A does something and homeowner B may do something else. And we had the conversation in the public meetings about, well, how come they did that and I, I did it this way and you didn't cover it for me and you're covering it for this homeowner? So, and they all know each other down there. So that's, it's a small community.
Well, I think the, you mentioned it, there is some latitude for, for my, for me to view those as, as, as they come in and determine, does this make sense? And I think it's from the perspective of holistically, does this make sense for the, for the overall project? And, you know, you're going to have brick down below and, and, you know, some sort of PVC siding, you know, on the top and aesthetics certainly come into play. I, I understand the desire for some folks to, to know and have spelled out and, you know, perhaps every possible permutation of what could happen between projects, which is a difficult thing to do. And, 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 you know, perhaps we can flesh out some additional language to clarify, you know, more of the intent. I, you know, with the, there's, the one thing is there, there aren't any preclusions. So we haven't said, you can't do this kind of siding, you know, maybe there's some guidelines that we developed that help people, you know, think about how to approach when they're looking at the initial design, working with the contractor and how, you know, so they can understand, think of, you know, think of the context of it that might help not, not limit, but necessarily, but more so just keep them thinking, yeah, maybe I should look at it this way. You know, you know.
Well, you know, just, just to your point, and again, we're going to have the letter read into the record in a moment. But, you know, Mr. Georgie and the correspondence, you know, this was mentioned in, in the meeting back last summer. And, you know, I've kind of kicked it around where it was characterized as a dispute resolution, but it may be that there's a, some sort of, maybe it's not even an appeal, but there's a process where it's known that it would rise to, to the level of director and/or even to, you know, I guess it could only come to the board, but I mean, I don't think, you know, it probably gets solved, you know, before it got to the board level, that if there were items that were, you know, of concern, I won't say they're questionable or whatever, that they're of concern, that to have a, a kind of a formal process or form say, you know, these are the items. And so that people know that going in that in the event, and even before project begins a lot of times, because you're costing that out. And it goes back to allowed costs. And, you know, what we're reimbursing for, what they're having to pay. And there is a, I would just say homeowners aren't getting a, a ride for free on this, that there's a contribution that they typically put forward. We're going to cover the full FEMA portion, but in today's environment, and I guess people are going to go to the extent that they do to raise their houses off the ground and put them, you know, 10, 15 feet in the air. There are other things that usually get built into that, that are born by the, by the, you know, the homeowners. And, and so that, that may be something, so you were kind of touching, I didn't want to.
Yeah, it may be, you know, prior to, you know, like any construction contract that you might do on a remodel, look at, you know, what are the, what's being specified for materials, you know, it's not, elevate the house and put some new siding on. That's obviously not specific. So, so it, it could be at the level where we draft guidelines that we use in the program and, and helps get specificity to the thought process. And in advance of work actually starting, you know, want to find out later, I didn't want purple siding on the bottom. So, so I think we can do that, that.
And there's some question around the size of a deck, but you know, if you're going up, you're going to, you're elevating, you, you know, it's not that you step out your door and you're on solid ground, you're 10 feet in the air now. And so your mobility, you know, it's one thing to have a patio at ground level when you're a ranch style house, but when you're now you're up in the air, to have that usable outdoor space. And again, we're not talking about elaborate schemes here, but I just, that's the type of thing where.
Sure. And, and I think, you know, something with decks, you know, first and foremost, we look at functionality.
Yeah, exit, exits, pathways.
Ingress, is, is there enough room for, you know, if, if there were a wheelchair or something? It, it's not just like a small apartment porch on the second floor where you can barely get in with your groceries, sort of something like that. And then, and then again, I think we can approach the same way in terms of program guidelines that say that, you know, there's a, there's, there's a maximum, a minimum that would be considered clearly, you know, a full wraparound deck, maybe a little bit beyond.
Right, I get it.
What, what makes sense. So I think we can, I think we can draft some guidelines that would work.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And again, I appreciate the work through it. And I think that, you know, people, again, were, you know, some folks are anxiously waiting for today's action because they've, you know, taken on costs that are far beyond, I think, what they contemplated. And $12,000 is not going to solve it all, but it will be a, a big boost. I did want to, and maybe this is for, for Lisa, and this isn't to the, so much to the question for Lisa Travis, that relative to, you know, the correspondence to Mr. Hoppy, this relates more to, and the question, and I know it's been posed, George has fielded, I fielded it, and it's in Mr. George's letter. And this goes to how the grant is treated under the IRS guidelines. We're not the tax advisors, but apparently, and I heard this yesterday evening late, so I didn't have a chance to talk to you, Lisa, since then, that we sent out 1099s to a couple of homeowners, you know, in order of magnitude of, you know, I, I heard one was 85, another was a hundred and something thousand dollars. You know, and, and George has been responsive. He said, you know, go to section, whatever it is, seven of the, some IRS memo. But there's some concern, and I think it's provided, it is, it's a reason for pause or hesitancy on some folks because they're concerned that they're going to get hit with some big tax liability. They, you know, they, they, you know, mitigate for flood, they participate in the program, they do it in good faith. And then that some of that participation puts them, you know, with a, and I'll just round off, say a hundred thousand dollar, you know, 1099 that there's some question around. So maybe you don't have immediate answer, but I do think.
Yeah, it's something that I think has been lurking around for quite some time. And as you understand, we can't give tax advice to the homeowners.
Right.
And so there is a question from the IRS guidance and the information that I think you have or has been provided as to whether or not it is a tax liability. So that is an open question. Unfortunately, like I said, we can't advise that of, to the, the participants. One option that I think was discussed a few years ago is to get independent tax advice that we would be able to have for ourselves. But that again, doesn't really help the homeowners. So it's kind of a hard situation to be in. You know, if the IRS came out with a ruling or a memo and answered the question, that would be helpful. We could certainly ask for that. But we don't, we can't guarantee that they would accept our request or provide such advice.
So maybe some additional research, and again, not to burden your offices, but I do think, again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a relevant question. And I know of at least one or two folks who are considering this, who've shared with me that, that, you know, that's a pretty big if, that if they had some more information that might provide a high level of confidence. Again, we're not their tax advisors, I get that. But we are advocating the program. We're working very hard, certainly in the auspices of water resources and, and, you know, in seeking these grants and providing additional resources by virtue of what we're being asked to do today to complement what we already do. And so if, 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 if you would be agreeable, I think however you would proceed and whether it's to seek advice of councils knowledgeable or to look for an IRS opinion or to ask the IRS, maybe a combination thereof. I don't, wouldn't expect an answer today. That's not the nature of what I'm asking. But I, I think, because it's not just relevant to here. I mean, we raise houses in, in, you know, Dry Creek floodplain. We've done houses elsewhere in the unincorporated county. I guess you've done about 100, George, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, this is a viable program elsewhere, but that, in, in, in the Point Pleasant community is, I think, amongst people talking amongst themselves is a concern. A lot of these folks are senior, they're elderly. You know, they're certainly not in the income bracket that they got hit without at any given year. And then they think they're doing the right thing. We're, 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 we're pushing a program because we believe it's the right thing to do and they agree. And then, but this question's lurking out there. So would you?
To address, I mean, you, you mentioned three things, I think. The, the third being look for an IRS opinion. And we already have done that and there is not one. So if directed, we would certainly be able to request such opinion from the IRS. And again, that would be contingent on them accepting that request or hire, like you said, tax expert, legal expert to provide an opinion to our office and water resources, which would obviously cost money. And then we would have to couch it again to the public that it's advice to us, but they can rely on it, but it's to their detriment, I guess, if they do and are wrong.
Yeah. Well, okay. But and, and, and maybe that's the way, again, we, you know, we have funds here. We do ensure folks. We are, you know, providing these dollars. And so again, I can't imagine that would be excessive to get that. you know, providing these dollars. And so again, I can't imagine that would be excessive to get that sort of a, you know, at least a a second or third opinion, whatever it might be. And again, they still would want to contact, you know, contact their own tax advisor, but I do think it would be helpful. And it might provide additional level of confidence with folks. Again, it might not be certainty, but it certainly would, I think, imbue confidence. So as we get to a motion a little later today, I may ask that we include that as a part of that. So, well, thank you for that. So so that's all I had. I don't have any other colleague. It didn't take so much time. I think the background was important and I appreciate the work that's been done here. Supervisor Kennedy, do you have a hand up? I see. Okay. All right, then we do have a letter into the record, but let's see if we have a caller's first flow.
We did not have any callers.
Okay, no callers. Okay. So Mr. Georgie, who was unable to be at the hearing day, asked it his letter to be read in the record. We kind of, I've touched on a couple of topic areas. It's not lengthy and there is an attachment that's been circulated. Hopefully, board members got it as well. So if you wouldn't mind, clerk, put that in the record and then we'll come back to the board for any further discussion.
Yes, this is an email from Alan Georgie. It was dated February 9th, or excuse me, it was dated February 3rd and asked to be read at this meeting. I regret that I am not able to attend today's meeting. I want to thank Supervisor Natoli and the Department of Water Resources for working with the residents of the Beachstone Lake area when crafting the proposal under consideration today. The proposal addressed concerns of the residents and incorporated suggestions that residents proposed. Assuming that the proposal is voted upon today, I would like to take this opportunity to look beyond the contents of the proposal and recommend the inclusion and approval of the following when voting. One, to extend the life of the available funds for the program, waive plan review fees as well as onsite inspection fees. Two, create a dispute resolution program so that owners who disagree with a DWR disallowance of a cost for payment or reimbursement can file a formal request for reconsideration that will be reviewed and ruled upon by a person or committee outside the DWR. Three, Attachment 7 of the Sacramento County Department of Water Resources Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Guide for Property Owners addresses the income tax consequence of accepting funds from this program. It states that a Form 1099 is required to be filed for payments over $600 and to consult a tax accountant or F T B for more information. This means if all 46 houses recommended for raising raising take advantage of the program, conceivably 46 requests will be made to F T B and tax accountants. However, on June 29th, 2004, Robert Brown, Associate Chief Counsel, Income Tax and Accounting of the Internal Revenue Services issued a memorandum pertaining to funds such as the ones for this program, stating in his summary and conclusions, quote, "The foundation elevations provided to property owners under all of these programs are includeable in the property's owner's gross income and under Section 61. Property owners must indulge in income the cash amount of the grant," end quote. Rather than multiple contacts to F T B and multiple fees being paid to tax accountants, the county can contact the Internal Revenue Service and confirm whether or not there has been any change to the June 29, 2004 IRS memorandum and supply it or the most current interpretation in the program guide when explaining in the guide without endorsing any interpretation that a 1099 form will be submitted. Finally, thank you all for your time in considering in considering these additional suggestions for inclusion. Sincerely, Alan Georgie. And an attachment was in the email of the FEMA grant taxability, which is in the record.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Phil, for reading that into the record and also noted.
And we have one caller right now.
Oh, we do. Okay, let's go to our caller then.
Okay, Jillian, please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes. Caller, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rachel Kubiak. I am a resident of the Point Pleasant area and first would like to acknowledge the the work that Supervisor Natoli has put into this item over the last many, many years, last 30 years, probably. I did have a couple of comments. One is, again, I want to, I do want to thank the Department of Water Resources for their work and their outreach on this. I I would have to respectfully disagree, however, with the the change in position in in the department and in the discussions that we have, that the flooding in this area is somehow not or has not been caused by the development upstream. I think that the facts in the record for the last 30 years are indisputable, that in fact, the development has been the main reason that this area has witnessed flooding that historically we did not see in this area. One thing I I did have a question about was a report that was discussed at the last community meeting. And I'm curious if there is anyone there that I could speak to the the status of that report. We were, again, given some some information about about what that report was on, but if someone could speak to exactly what the report is is being contracted for or how it is directly going to impact the the actions in this area, that would be helpful. And and then I guess, secondly, I would just like to state that having having the house raising as, in essence, the only option that the county is now acknowledging is is somewhat disingenuous to the original resolution in 99. So clearly, the mitigation and the flood insurance that was provided to this community was done, as noted, as temporary until real mitigation measures had been adopted. And as we know, those mitigation measures were not adopted and acknowledgement that they cannot be adopted. But having the county's position over the last three years, and again, I will acknowledge as a homeowner, the 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 county has reached out to the homeowner to try and discuss the the raising of the house with the community. But I think on some level, there's a lack of acknowledgement by the Department of Water Resources, the difficulty in what is being requested, how traumatizing it actually is to residents in this area. And the fact that it doesn't necessarily mitigate the fact that the the land that we own will still be flooded. Many of us have livestock, many of us farm and and other things. And and none of that is, in essence, being captured in the fact that if we just raise our house, it will in some way mitigate the problem that was created outside of the community. Right? This was not a problem historically, and it's been created, and this is the only option. So with that, I'll close it again. I thank you for the time to comment. And if you have any information on the report, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, just stand by, Rachel, and I'll let Michael Peterson give us status on that. But in one, I just want to thank you. I know you've been very thoughtful in your comments. You've participated certainly in community meetings. You have an interest, obviously, because you and your family live there. And also, I know I've done a tremendous amount of research, and that's been helpful, not just in conversation, but I think the considerations before us today. But I would note that there's a compliment, a supplemental, a additional item is going to come to this board, as I understand it, I'll let Michael fill in the blanks here, in, you know, in, you know, in the near future, that will have the contents of the consultant's report that was alluded to, Mr. Booth referenced it in the conversations, community meeting. I know that a draft copy has been made available. There was still, I guess, work on on the finalization of that report, and I don't, I for one, don't know what determination has been made or not. I would just say right now, for the record, though, to your point, and I said at the public meeting in January, and I'll, you know, I trust I'll say it again when this comes forward, depending upon what's in that report, that to somehow get to a point where, because of some other downstream work that may be contemplated, that certainly can benefit this community, Point Pleasant and surrounding areas by lowering the water elevation that would come up from the the south via the Casimnas or McCormick Williamson. But to say that that somehow negates what contributing factors have occurred in the area to the east and north of the community of Point Pleasant and Franklin. I find it, and I said this very respectfully to George, and I think I've repeated it to Michael, that, you know, I for one am not persuaded, I haven't seen the data, but this county's position, going back to what George iterated since the floods of 1986, has looked at contributing factors to flood elevations in certain elevations and frequency, and there are factors both to the south and to the north and, you know, and whether one raises their house or not, and I, it's my view that there have been impacts. The county's acknowledged it document after document, study after study, and including collecting mitigation fees. And any analysis that would say otherwise, I would, again, I'll certainly reserve the right to read the report, but it would certainly go contrary to the position this county has taken in all of our efforts, including what's before us today, to address an issue that isn't solely created by upstream development. And I'd be the first to acknowledge that. There are, you know, flood risks from different directions, but you know, there's been a contribution in certain storm events, and there's been modeling that's been requested and so forth. But the report, as I understand it, I'll let you, Michael, fill in. I don't know if it's been completed. I know it was under review. It will be the basis for a further discussion by our board. As I understand it, you kind of broke this in two parts. And so I kind of answered some of Rachel's questions, but maybe you could fill in the the gap and when we might expect to see that, how that would be evaluated and brought forward to our board.
Yeah, the the study in question was intended to provide a, I guess, a true up or an update on the mod, you know, on the basic modeling that would have been done 25 or so years ago regarding the impact, the incremental impact from upstream development through a period of time, because that that's sort of the defining measure of what the county was pursuing in terms of mitigation. It's was not, and I think it's echoed in county council's memo that was provided for this hearing. The entirety of the floodplain is not what the county is committed to. There was a time where projects that would have addressed, say with a ring levy, the the constraint of the floodplain completely were proposed. Those were deemed just infeasible from a financial and mitigability standpoint. So there's an incremental impact, and that's what we're talking about. And the approach that we're taking is what can we do with this funding to make a benefit? It could be an incremental benefit, if you want to call it that, but it's not, the intent is not, we need to, we're going to pursue and we're going to get rid of the entirety of the floodplain, because that's that does not, that was not the measure of what the county was tasked to do. That said, we're, you know, study will also help us identify, is there a means through McCormick Williamson track project, upstream attenuation, devise an additional mitigation of elevations downstream due to, you know, holding back flood volume? That's that's part of what this study will also provide. And the staff, staff is vetting the study. I know there's been some discussion with Mr. Hoppy in the community, and there's there's a measure that he'd like us to take on in terms of modeling the 86 event against this model, just to help, in his mind, to just help make sure it's calibrated appropriately. So we're going to be moving forward with that to 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 give that additional backstop. It, you know, this is how we modeled it. This is how it's reflecting the 100-year event. Additionally, we're going to test that against the 86 flow, which is, which is what Mr. Hoppy would like us to do. And Mike Johnson's on the line. If there's anything I'm missing, but that that's the nature of the study. So and then we'd like to come back to the board with that in the next few months with with some discussion and, you know, what it says, what it says and what it means moving forward.
And and thank you for that, Michael. And I say, I would concur, not with just Mr. Hoppy, but I think that 86 being a flood of record, it is certainly, it was a different storm event and different sequence than what we saw in 97, 98, or 2017, which had much larger influences from, you know, the from the south. Again, I'm not an engineer, but I've spent enough time with you all and others to have a little, some basic understanding. So I think it's important to include that in the model. I'm glad to hear that you can move forward with that. I would just say too, that hopefully embedded what you just said wasn't real clear, but, you know, the idea behind the study is not to discount impacts that have occurred upstream. Certainly, there have been incremental and to, if there's an evaluation that would establish even more clarity what those impacts are. But this isn't just trying to get to net zero.
Correct.
That's not the exercise here. There have been impacts upstream, there have been impacts downstream, there have been raising levies downstream, there have been strengthening of levies downstream. There, you know, are other impacts that occur within the, you know, reaches of of these communities. And, you know, the railroad strengthens this levy, it holds longer, I-5, you know, gets raised or a Culver gets caught. So there's all kinds of factors. Don't get into the models. But I guess, I think one of the concerns, and I think Rachel did a good job of touching on it, Michael and I did share with you this. I know George heard it directly, is that somehow the study, and I don't think it was being portrayed this way, but people were interpreting because of maybe some of the answers to the questions, that this was going to be an out for the county from any responsibility going forward for any development, which there's still going to be tens of thousands of houses in that Morrison Creek Basin, as El Grove and the county and Ranch Cordova continue to grow all the way past Sunrise and including the city of Sacramento and Delta Shores. That somehow this was going to relieve the obligation of the county to, you know, be a strong participant and do just what we're doing today. Having this conversation about how to help folks to deal with, you know, issues of of flood elevation that we, again, I I say this based on county reports, my own belief that we've contributed to. It may be measuring inches and not in in feet, but nonetheless, if it's your house and that water's lapping at your threshold, you were out with me in 2017 and you saw, you know, where it was right at, you know, right at the threshold of a house that was going to get flooded for the third and didn't. I don't think it got underneath the floor, but so I I think that's where some of the concern.
Oh, sure. And I think we've been, the study's not intended to give us an out. The study will give us, you know, updated information, perhaps more accurate based on compared with modeling that would have been available 30 years ago, looking at assumptions and development. But we're still, it's almost that aside, we're continuing to look at how do we find the benefits for the community using the Beachstone Lake funding, the mitigation fee that's charged. And that would include, are there real opportunities upstream for attenuation that could further mitigate?
No, and that's great. And those are all positives. And I just, I just, you know, and I, you know, my conversations, and I think certainly, you know, as this comes forward, you know, to the board for our consideration at a future date, and I understand it's going to be fairly soon, right? That, you know, I want to continue to provide the assurance to folks that this board, this county, with your good work and certainly assistance of all the departments that are a part of this, but your representatives that we're going to continue to work with this community and others to, you know, address issues of of flood impacts, particularly those that we have any involvement and are control over. And we will advocate, as I said earlier, and I appreciate your response on the Sacramento River Levy improvements. And McCormick Williamson will probably be a question. We'll talk about how we might use those monies to buy some permanent reduction in the elevation for the weir. And we'll see that, I guess, in, you know, in a fairly short amount of time. So. And did you see Michael Johnson? Anybody else have any other staff weigh in?
Yeah, Michael's on. I don't know if he has anything else to add. You know, if if not, that's fine. I just, let me try, I didn't miss anything. And that sounds like not, so.
All right. And then lastly, Lisa, thank you for your response. I think you've responded to some of the questions in the letter. I trust that there may be some additional information as we consider the second item that we just referenced here coming forward in a month or two. Is that accurate?
Right. There's there is an additional question or two that we will address when the item that you referred. the item that you referred to comes back.
Okay, very good, well, again, I, my thanks to county staff, and hopefully, Rachel, that answers the question for the here and now, and one, lastly, when that report is in its format that it will be considered for presentation aboard, Michael, that we made avail, we can make that available to the community?
Very good.
All right, may, it may involve another community meeting, so, I know George will welcome the opportunity to join me down there, again, with the folks in Point Pleasant, so, all right, any other callers, Madam Clerk?
There are no other callers in the queue.
Okay, very good, let me go to my colleagues, thank you for your patience, this has, you know, been many steps along the road here on this, this matter, but what we have before us today, I think reflects a good body of work and some additional, we, some polishing of the original report, and I think some clarifications and some important aspects, and I appreciate the opportunity to spend some time talking about this, this is a serious matter for people in the unincorporated part of this, part of our county, and what we've had before us, I, I support here today, and we'll have more coming back a little later in early spring, let's put it that way, and pick up the conversation there, but, I, so I would, I would move the item with the direction or, or request that county council review the IRS criteria, and that, Michael, you'll bring back on a separate matter, but certainly a discussion about the Sacramento River.
Yes.
Let me see, a future item on this, and. Okay, I have a second by Supervisor Frost.
Member Frost?
Aye.
Member Kennedy?
Aye.
Member Natoli?
Aye.
Member Desmond?
Aye.
And Member Serna?
Aye.
And that is a unanimous vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
George is not yet, 5 o'clock, you can make the calls of folks and tell them that the check could be in the mail. He's on mute. Okay, very good, okay, thank you very much, thanks to my board, thank you, Ms. Kubiak and Mr. Hoppy and others who've been diligent, Mr. Georgie for their commentary, all right, so that takes us down to item number four, which is the county executive, Anne.
Yeah, I just want to, I didn't have an opportunity to jump in after the homeless presentation, so I know that I also want to weigh in with my thanks for the entire homeless team, Ethan and Julie and Emily, but I also want to sort of highlight Bruce's contributions, he has a very wide span of things that he's responsible for now, and I would argue that he probably spends more than half, maybe even more than 80% of his time on homelessness, so I wanted to thank him as well, and thank the whole homeless team, they do a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Anne, yeah, can never say thanks enough, so appreciate your comments. Okay, any else you want, any announcements, I mean, today, we got done before 5 o'clock, balancing it out, all right, with that, then, nothing further, go to board member comments, suggestions, announcements. I see none, okay, so, with that, unless, Madam Clerk, there's any other order of business, well, one final thanks to our staff, and we'll adjourn the meeting at 4:23, and we'll see everybody back next Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Okay, and next Wednesday, okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good, we were standing in German, thank you all, okay.
Bye.